Welcome everyone to the September 7th meeting. It's been a couple of weeks since our last meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes of August 17th. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes of August 17th? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
Send it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Keith Donnelly, I'd like to turn the floor over to you if I could.
Okay, thanks Mayor. There is one slight change in the agenda. Officer Ramola is not going to be with us tonight because he's in Florida. On vacation. Anyway, Mayor Commissioners, thanks for giving us the opportunity here to introduce all of our new officers. Folks, we have four of us tonight. Four Elkins fans who, over the course of the past year or more, have gone through a rigorous hiring process, have come through a very rigorous training at either the Harford County Sheriff's Department Training Academy or the Baltimore City Police Training Academy. Regardless of where they went, the training was tough on them, taught them an awful lot, and they all did an outstanding job in completing 27 weeks of intense training. So, I'm going to introduce each of them, read a real quick bio, and then have Mayor actually swear them in here. So, if I get you guys to stand up, please. Thanks. First officer I'm going to introduce is Officer Thomas Salisbury. Tom was born in Baltimore City, Maryland, raised in Harford County, where he attended and graduated from Harper Technical High School. Tom successfully completed 27 weeks of entrance-level training at the Harper County Sheriff's Academy. He completed his training in April 2015 and then subsequently completed 12 weeks of field training here at the town of Elkins. Tom's already been a tremendous asset to the police department. He was Officer of the Year in 2015, so Tom Salisbury. Next officer is Officer First Class Anthony Vine. Anthony has been a Cecil County resident all his life, and he has graduated from the Elkton High School. He holds several college credits in law enforcement from the Cecil College. Anthony completed his entrance-level training with the Baltimore City Police Academy and graduated in August 2015, and subsequently did 12 weeks of intense field training here at the Elkton Police Department. The last two officers that I'll introduce, actually have been with us, I guess, lately over a year, would have more recently graduated from entrance-level training. Officer Gregory Brown. Gregory was born in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. His family moved to Newcastle County, Delaware, where Greg attended and graduated from Del Castle Technical High School. Greg successfully completed 27 weeks of entrance-level training at the Harper County Sheriff's Department, graduating on August 4th of this year. He is presently in field training. Greg is married and has two children. Officer Enos Detwiler. Mick was born in Doylestown, Pennsylvania, currently residing in Cecil County. Mick successfully completed 27 weeks of entrance-level training with the Harper County Sheriff's Department and is presently in field training. He graduated August 4th, 2016. Mike's married, has children, who are here in the room tonight. And Mick is also a member of the Navy Reserve, serving as a military police officer. It's great to have you guys on board. You've already proven, despite your tenure, that you're an asset to the community and to the department. And now Mayor Alt is going to swear in, so I get you guys to slide a little over here. Don't trip over down there.
All righty. Please raise your hand. I state your name.
I am Bernard.
Do you swear and affirm?
Do swear and affirm.
That I support the Constitution of the United States?
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of Maryland?
To the State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of police officer?
Execute the office of police officer.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state?
And laws of this state.
Thank you. Do you want to get any photographs with your family, or everything's good? Take a picture of all of us?
Yeah.
We're only getting photographed. All right, we're going to take a picture of this photograph. In that one. Get a picture right there. Mary Jo will be in. Get you on the other side. You're good. Nah, you're good. That was because of our nice video. Okay, Lou, I think the next thing that we have is a budget amendment 2016-09.
I have three budget amendments that go to the board's consideration. The first one is budget amendment number 2016-009. It's taking this budget $116,321 from the fund balance. This is all for fiscal year 2016. It's allocating $2,664 of it to building inspection, capital department, capital online router. It's allocating $73,725 to Department of Public Works, who cares the maintenance account. It's allocating $14,504 to Waste Removal Department for contract to services, and $25,428 to Waste Removal Department landfill fees. This is all to amend the original budget to account for, or budget for overextended accounts once the fiscal year is over, and accruals and deferrals were overlooked.
Do we have approval for budget amendment 2016-009?
Send it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Just to be clear about the budget amendment, we're just doing some housecleaning with these first two budget amendments, correct?
That's correct. There's no way expense more out of fund balance, it's just a budgeting tool.
Very good. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item, budget amendment 2016-010.
It's a budget $259,810 from the fund balance, the highway user revenue, which is highway user revenue we have received in excess of what we have expended over years into the current year budget, into FY16 budget. That means that we spent $259,810 more than we received in the current year, but we have that million dollars from prior years in excess of what we have spent.
Very good. Do we have approval for budget amendment 2016-010?
Send it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this budget amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
My final budget amendment is number 2017-03. It's for the current fiscal year, which is FY17. It's a budget $6,065 in the community legacy program, and that is for community promotions for the facade grant we received. The facade grant was fiscal year, the amount of $50,000. This is what is on spend for last year's grant. We're just carrying it over into the current year.
Very good. Do we have approval for budget amendment 2017-03? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that budget amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Steve, real quickly, you and I had a conversation, I think it was earlier this week, that we appear to be in place for our audit to...
Over the year, Monday.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, it is now 7:10, and we're going to have a public hearing in regards to annexation Resolution A1-2016, which is Acorn Investment Group parcel located at 722 East Plaski Highway, identified as Tax Map 316, parcel 728, presented for adoption, and it is now 7:12. Gene, do you want to read anything in to start with, or did I do it well?
Yes, the August 8th, the Elkton Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the annexation of 722 East Plaski Highway, Tax Map 316, parcel 728. The property was requested as semi-classification of Highway Commercial C2, which is compatible with the property's current Cecil County zoning classification of PG Business General. No action was required by Cecil County Government for that, since the semi-classification was not substantially different than that of the county. Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the annexation and to recommend approval for request of zoning. We also received correspondence from the county verifying that they in fact did not have to approve the zoning since it was consistent with the existing zoning. And we also received correspondence from Merrill Department of Planning stating that there was no issue with the annexation.
Very good. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments for our guests here tonight, which is Mr. Gwain Tomy and...
I'm Jacob.
Very good. Anyone from the board have any question or comments for them?
The only question I have is, once you're approved, and everything goes through, when do you think you're going to move that away?
We would like to start in February, since we need to deliver by August 12th.
Apparently anxious to get started, obviously we've got a planning process we have to go through first.
This is a public hearing, and I have Mrs. Ann Connor. If you'd like to say a few words or have any questions or comments from 45 Entiel Road, do you have a question or comment?
I have a comment. My property is, it's right behind the property that's being annexed, and I just have concerns because that was the property that was trying to get a methadone clinic in there, and the county ordinance is what stopped it. The town doesn't have such an ordinance. I'm very hopeful that this new fountain goes in there, because it'd be wonderful compared to what's there now, and has been for years. But my concern is if it's annexed into the town and all this falls through, there's nothing to stop it from going back and getting a methadone clinic in there, because the town has nothing to stop that. So that's a big concern of mine, because that building is 100 feet from my front door.
Yep.
It borders my property. Right now, the only barrier between the two properties is my chain link fence and a row of hindrews. So, we have issues with people with them now, out in the fence and doing that kind of stuff.
Yes.
So, I wanted to get that to the record. I do have that concern, and my neighbors have that concern, and unfortunately, a couple of them that were here at the planning meeting couldn't be here tonight, and I told them I would be sure to come and raise that concern. It is my hope of hopes that you can do and get done what you want to do and get that property redeveloped, because it certainly needs something. I actually have a current aerial picture of the property, and there are hundreds of tires piled in the yard, which is, it's against code. There's cars parked out front, right up to the Route 40.
Yep.
So, that's another question I have. How long after it's annexed, can the town get this mess cleaned up? Because I haven't had a look with the health department, county doesn't seem interested in it, but I wonder about what are in these tires, West Nile, Zika, what's leaching into the ground and into my well? There's a lot of concerns here, so. And anybody wants to see how, if you want to see it to clean it up?
I like to have a copy of what you said, and have the people give it to her, and she can run it and copy it off.
Oh, you can have it.
Yeah, I would like to see it also.
The Secretary of State would rather have myself in her copy, happy so much for that meeting.
I think the, just real quickly, I think everyone on the board here has the same concerns that you have, and I truly feel the same way. Fortunately, we have a planning commission, and we have a Board of Appeals, and there'd be a lot of hoops that, they're going to have to go through a lot of hoops anyhow to move forward with the project. But I think I'd have to defer to Gene Minner to help me understand what we can do about the tires, because at one time, we talked about the contingency upon that, and I'm not sure if that's...
If I can respond to that.
Yes.
We've had several conversations with the existing owner, and he fully understands that once this annexation is complete, which ideally, if you pass it tonight, it'd be 45 days.
What are they saying?
He then must make that property comply with all the town's regulations. He's already provided notice to the tenant in there, so he's been made very aware of that, and we're going to sit on him, make sure he understands that he has a great interest in selling the property. My client isn't applying without a request, so I don't envision that as a problem. He's assured me on several occasions, and I think even in a public meeting, once he understands that, and he knows what he has to do.
I'd like to touch base with Connor, I think, and Ms. Ann Connor, they need a comment. Would you mind, at that rate, what our conversation, I had brought up, the town was blindsided before with an issue that we had brought to us before, and we did question the same thing you questioned, but as board members, we can't tell the developer what they can bring in and how to bring it in. It has to be brought through the proper channel. So, would you mind?
Yeah, if I can respond to that also. I think my client made it very clear that they don't have any dealings with methadone clinics that would actually be inconsistent with their arrangements with the other tenants in the center that they were instructed. If we can make this part of the public, Gene is a part of the record, kind of showing you what their idea, what they're going to be doing on the property. You know, I don't know what else to tell you, other than they've been very firm about the fact that it would be a real detriment to them to even consider having that kind of use on the site. Because, you know, it would make it very difficult, if not impossible, to rent out the rest of the commercial space in the center. And they have, that's what they have to do. They're in a tight timeframe to get this built, and they already are talking to tenants to come in.
All right, good. Is there, you had something?
I have one question. With the last meeting, I had asked the size, which I believe was 10,400 square feet, approximately?
1,600.
600. And you also mentioned that there was a possible franchise restaurant wanting to come in?
Yeah. Fastest avenue, not necessarily a franchise.
Okay. How many square foot would that be taking of the building?
Those usually about 26.
26. Okay.
Very good. Anyone else from the public have any questions or comments about this annexation? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed at 7:20. Thank you.
I just know this is part of the...
Yes, you may.
We've been very upfront with the tenant to give a copy, show what it is, and what it's going to be. It'll be a major...
Do you want to let those take a look at it too?
Yeah.
Have you seen it? Okay.
Yeah. Very good. Yep. Very nice. Do we have a motion to approve the annexation A1-2016? We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Do we have any discussion on the annexation as presented for adoption? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The annexation.
There you go. The annexation will be effective October 22nd.
October 22nd. So, you have to through the 22nd of October to get those tires cleaned up.
I'll give them a call.
Okay, the next item is ordinance 3-2016. Lou, do you want to tell us a little bit about that, or is that Gene?
Well, Gene can tell you about it. Gene, you want to explain what that's all about?
Certainly. We currently allow the sale of and rental of motor vehicles in the commercial zones. We do not allow the sale of large tractor-trailer type vehicles and trailers in the C2 zone, Highway Quarter zone. However, we have a zone by I-95, which is the Highway Interchange Commercial Zone, which allows for truck stops, but it doesn't say anything about sales. So, we wanted to correct that. We had someone interested in actually locating a trailer sales for large tractor-trailers in that zone, the C3 zone. And so, we are amending the ordinance to capture something that wasn't originally in there and place it hopefully in a zone in which it's consistent with the other uses in the same zone, which is the C3 zone.
Is that the C2 area?
It's Highway Interchange, yes. It's up by I-95.
Why can't we do the C2?
On the C2 zone, a lot of the commercial areas in the C2 zone are smaller, and the sale of large trailers, tractor-trailers, they take up a lot of room and don't really fit the C2 zone in Elkton anyway. But they're more conducive to the highway interchange where we do a lot of trucks and those sort of things.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just worried if you have all these car dealerships all along the 40, and if there were to be a parcel of land that's quite large, would that not be...
The Planning Commission felt that it was more appropriate to see it present.
To put it over by the truck?
Or allow it by, yeah.
So, they've already reviewed it?
The Planning Commission, yes. They recommended approval. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't have any...
Keep legging that, sorry.
I don't have any problem with voting in your favor, I'm just curious, you know, why would we allow commercial areas if it would fit?
There was discussion initially in allowing it in C2 zone, and the Planning Commission just felt that it wasn't, it didn't quite fit in our commercial, especially on the 40. And so, they did feel that it was a pretty...
No, I understand your opinion, I'm just curious.
The Planning Commission, that they're meeting on Monday, August 8th, voted to recommend approval of the sale of cargo trucks in the C3 zone in certain conditions.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve ordinance 3-2016 cargo trucks? We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second and any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Lou, you were on.
The, what I have is the, the board is well aware that the Cecil College has leased the Family's Corner Education Center on Hinesworth Manor for the last 15 years, roughly. And they have given us notice that they're pulling out of the program, although they will support the Maryland Family Network, and some of their other Instagram programs are going in. In lieu of the Cecil College, the Maryland Rural Development Corporation has stepped in and accepted the responsibility of leasing that property, and I have worked with their executive director, along with the executive director and representative of the Maryland Family Network, to make this piece be a viable option for the agency left by Cecil College, and also Cecil College is on board with the MRDC renting this property. The lease actually leases the building and grounds to them for $1 for 15 of their period, though there is a way of termination many days, no dispute of priority, and thus been left in there to conserve. There's a clause in there that allows the Maryland Family Network to work in concert with Maryland Rural Development Corporation, while its sort, all the GND programs, everything that they've been doing all this time. I doubt that the people who are recipients of the benefit provided by that facility will notice any change, other than legal change that were... I would recommend that the board authorize the lease of the Family's Corner Education Center on Hinesworth Manor to the Maryland Rural Development Corporation of Annapolis, Maryland.
Do we have a motion to approve the lease agreement?
Send it.
We have a motion?
Thank you.
And a second. Jonathan, have you hooked this over?
I have, I'm excited.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
They're all excited about having that go forward, so.
Very good. Ready? Okay, I have a few things. On the Planning Commission, we've had a vacancy for some time now. We've had one member that has not been coming to the meetings, and we've actually sent a certified letter, we sent several emails, and we haven't got any response. So, I think to remove Mr. Steve Leonard from the Planning Commission, I think officially we need to take a vote.
I'm okay.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on removal of Mr. Steve Leonard from the planning board? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I'd like to make an appointment of Will Muller to the Planning Commission to fill the vacancy. This will expire on February 28, 2019. This will put us up at full staff. We have a motion to approve Will Muller. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on Will Muller? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have, we have, do we have a historical meeting this month, or no?
It's scheduled to be the last time since September.
Don't ask.
We do have an application, so we could have a hearing.
Did Mr. Morgan meet that state requirement, or no?
I did send you an email on that, and he does meet the criteria for his professional background.
So, is that one of the two that we need?
There are two owners that need to have backgrounds, that need the Secretary of Interior Standards for professional qualifications. They're really difficult to meet, because they have, it looks like a PhD or a master's degree in history, or architecture, or architecture. And so, we don't have two currently that meet that on the board, so it's something I guess we'll aim for. But he does need a professional qualification, or a professional qualification.
Okay, very good. I've got two appointments I'd like to make to the Historic District Commission. The first one would be, I'd like to appoint Jonathan Hugh, most people probably knowing this huff, lives on East Main Street. I'd like to appoint him to the Historic District Commission. Term would go through August 31st, 2019. Do we have a motion to approve?
You do, sir.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion on Jonathan Hugh? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The second appointment of the three, I'd like to appoint Mr. Brian Morgan to the board. Now, Brian is the individual that we were just speaking about, and he actually works with KCI Engineering. I think he would be an asset to this board also. Do we have a motion to approve Brian Morgan on the Historic District Commission?
Send it.
We have a motion? We have a motion? Second and a second. Any discussion on Mr. Morgan? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. So we currently have one vacancy left on the Historic District Commission, so I'm asking the board to take a look, and we'd like to find someone that has the requirements. We currently have, well, I'm not 100% sure, so I'm asking the board to take another close look, and it doesn't have to be an individual who is in the town, they can live somewhere in the county on this board. So if you find someone that meets the requirements...
Two people can be outside the town.
Two people can be outside the town, which I think is the craziest thing I've ever heard in my life, but...
I need to try to encourage, to get opposed with the background, the gene...
So again, the background level, or being specific, is what, that we know?
I did not bring it with me, however.
What, the gist of it?
Two members have to have sort of a higher level of background in archaeology, history, historic architecture, architecture, that sort of thing, history of architecture. The rest of the board members have to either show an interest or educational training in a variety of things, including planning, landscape architecture, which Brian has degree in landscape architecture, and in history and general archaeology, that sort of thing.
So this remains seat, for what specific? Have you already met the criteria?
No, the criteria is pretty strict, and we haven't met it yet because we don't have two people that have a higher level of training in...
Oh, we did that second.
Well, we did have one, architecture, but historic architecture, archaeology. So if you know any archaeologists...
Oh, sure.
Or folks with a degree or background in history.
That'll work?
That'll help, yes. That would work.
Can you send that to us in the...
Yeah, sure.
...qualifications, Gene? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Lou, there was a request for an additional streetlight on Curtis Avenue. Actually, I think it was Curtis Lane, or was it Curtis Avenue?
Curtis Lane.
I mean, Curtis Avenue.
Curtis Alley.
Curtis Alley.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And I think that you went back and took a look at that, and there was, there's one active streetlight, please check it, it works right in the middle of that block. We put that in, I don't know how many years ago, because of the... What do you recommend, do we need an additional light, or should it be the homeowner's responsibility to put a security light maybe on the back of the garages, or what you're feeling? Can you give us a recommendation by the next meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you. And there was also a request for a streetlight on West Main Street, which would kind of go along with that one. I think the West Main Street one, I think that there's action at the new, the old Air Products, I think that that would resolve a lot of our issues, so I know that there's some things in the works there.
There's the five streetlights between Jeffers and West Main, there's three intervening streetlights under Lanning Lane, and the police department checked them all, they're operating, so you have five streetlights between Jeffers Street and Lanning Lane are red.
Okay.
I think when the company gets interested in purchasing Air Products, I think it'll pull up quite a bit there.
And I think that that has been the issue, I think, without being, having an owner or tenant of that property. I lived right at 334 West Main, and I can tell you when Air Products was there, it was lit up, and if you get used to that, now today, it's not lit up because there's no one active in there, I'm sure that that's what you're feeling. So we'll take a look at that as we go. Next, on September the 13th, September the 13th, next Tuesday, is an election wrap-up meeting for the past election that we had. So I know that Michelle, you're leading that, I believe, and with the members of the election board to find out how the election went in general. Several years ago, we started, two years ago, we talked about our election process and some of the things that we need to change, or we think that we should change into the process. The one thing that really sticks out to me, and I know that when you're meeting with the election board next Tuesday, the one in particular, I think that we should make the deadline date a little bit, currently we have 30 days when the last candidate can file prior to the election. I tend to believe that that should at least be 60 days, and I think that gives staff some time, it gives, I just think it's, gives more time to prepare for the election. Yeah, it gives a little bit more electioneering going on out there, but I think collectively, I think 60 days could be a good cutoff. But that's just my comment, maybe ask the election board, and then I'm going to ask next Wednesday at our workshop, maybe we can address some of the things that John, that you were working on with the election. We were talking about changing the date of the election, we've talked about a lot of different things, but quite frankly, we never moved forward with anything. And I'd like to either put them the rest one way or the other, instead of having them hanging out there. So the board okay with putting that on the agenda for next Wednesday?
Yeah, very good.
Very good, thank you.
I've always just wanted to know.
Next, next Monday, September 12th, I have a prior engagement, and I need someone to take over as the ex officio for next Monday. Who wants to volunteer to sit in on the planning board meeting from this board? Has anyone said yes?
I have the same, it's the college one.
Yeah, that's the college one, that's where I'm going to. Next Monday, it's from 7, probably 7 to 8:30.
If mine stood the bill out, I would say I have to look out and...
Very good, no need to break. Michelle, if you could remind Commissioner Gibbons as we get closer. The Elton Guide went out. I thought the changes that we made, the suggestions that the, some of the residents from the town made, and as far as staff made, I think that the guide turned out wonderful. I think this is our second edition. Next year, we'll be into volume two, edition one, I guess, is what it would be, and we're going to still continue to improve. I had Mr. Lemon actually bring this to me tonight, this was from the city of Milford. They have their own little guide, and I'm going to peek through this thing and see if there's any additional items that we need to add to ours. But I think the touch of adding the calendar to our guide this year, I think for the fall is going to really help. And Mary McGold with Parks and Rec, and I'm still in your thunder, but Mary had actually stated that the participation in the Parks and Rec program have really grown, or they, we had a real big jump when we included it into the book. So hopefully that trend will follow into the fall and winter sports. Today, I had the pleasure, I think, of coming in here with the Elton Police Department and try the simulator. The, Gene, can you, can you tell me what I did today? Give me a piece of equipment that I was working with today.
And the score?
The score is actually pretty good.
Really?
Yeah. And what the mayor did is, twice each year, we do firearms qualifications for all officers, and one of the things we do is an actual simulator. We bring it in here and set it up, and it projects on the wall, and it gives a number of different actual scenarios, persons with other kinds of weapons, whether it be a knife, a gun, a club, shoot-don't-shoot scenarios, some quick raising targets that you have to shoot. The mayor went through some person, row of individuals, and had to pick out the one with the gun, and actually hit that one, and he did real well on that, actually did real well on all of them. So it's a, it's a simulator that we use...
77%. But the stress that he had put me under, and I want to stress that, I want to stress that, that our officers have to make these split-second decisions. And if you ever get to attend a, what do you call it, a citizens' academy, I know the county actually offers a simulator to the citizens. If you ever get an opportunity, I think it's extremely important to try that, because there are situations where I'm the backup police officer, and I'm not drawn because it's a regular traffic stop, next thing you know, the guy's got a gun, and he's going to shoot your partner, how do you react? And you've got to make sure it's a threatening situation. It was, it was a, I think I lost my partner twice. And I can tell you, it wasn't very easy. And then, can I tell you the other situation, where you walk into a house, there was a call, and there's a male laying on the ground, certainly had a gunshot in him, he's saying, "Call for help." There's his wife or girlfriend with the gun in her hand, and she's expecting. So she's expecting, and she's got the gun, and you're trying to calm her down, but she's not feeling calm, and all of a sudden, she goes down like this to shoot her husband, what do you do? It's very, very difficult to make those split-second decisions, because that gun could go from air to there, or however it may get. It's, I applaud the officers because it was not a, and I knew it was make-believe for me, and it was fairly stressful. So I would recommend anytime that the board can have an opportunity, and I was thinking if there was ever a way that we could invite members of the public in at some point to do that, it would have to be on a scheduling, because once you saw one, then you would know the situations, I think. So you would have to come at different times, but it was, I was very impressed by it.
It's a great, it's a great training tool that we have, and we use it a couple times a year. As we have this thing out this week, we're doing firearms training, two of our officers actually were out on a call yesterday morning, late yesterday morning, over on West High Street, which the nature of the call was a man with a knife. These officers just happened to be right in the immediate area, they got there within seconds of the call, and get out and encounter a man with a knife. They immediately resorted to their training, they had to draw their weapons, but at the same time, they were trying to de-escalate the situation, which they did successfully, and got the man to drop the knife, and got him in custody without incident. So, you know, one of the officers was actually in the training yesterday, so just a little added piece of information there. Training is well, well worth every dime that we paid for that piece of equipment, which was several thousand dollars. And like I said, we train with it at least twice, twice each year, so.
Thank you. Okay, Mary Jo, I'm going to let you talk about the video when it comes to, you know more about that than I do. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Broom, over there to the right, to start with.
I just want you to know that, I already told the commissioner, if he can't make it, I'll leave it out there.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, we're covered. There was some correspondence about the Welcome to Elton signs, and I was just hearing, are we enjoying them?
What we, there was six signs that were probably put up in 2000, probably 2000?
We were on the work.
Where's that pretty worn out?
They were worn out.
Changed maybe twice since then.
So we met with, Mary Jo and I had met with Dan Hanley, and we wanted to make sure that we got them cleaned up, painted up, on-site, and without spending a lot of time, we want to come up with a message that we can put onto the sign. Of course, I'd like to see it say, "Mayor Robert J. O. welcomes you to Elton." That's, of course, my goal was to put something like that onto it, maybe have the town logo and website, and the chamber website onto it, but I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, it's going to be something that we want to, with this new branding that we're going through, we'll probably change them, so something very inexpensive is what we wanted to do.
So you're looking to, this means you have all of them?
All six of them.
Oh, okay, all right, that's important. I'm glad you're here, Mrs. Broom. I did have a rather serious inquiry about North Bird Street, and why would you not have sidewalks there?
Does that, Jerry, go across the street?
Probably from the bridge up until 279, that section from Verde Park to the bridge. I know there's sidewalks by the gas station where the bridges stop.
Right. That is a state highway there?
I mean, they did a beautiful job on the south side of the bridge.
Correct, and I believe they initiated that project. That was originally, the south side was a, a good sidewalk grant that we received, and we used that money to put the sidewalks in, and then for some mysterious reason, they came back and realized they didn't need code, so they...
Oh, they don't...
But it's definitely initiated through state highway. We could request sidewalks. We're currently working on a pedestrian plan for the town of Elton, the planning department is working with through WMAFCO and the state of Maryland to develop a pedestrian plan. So we can, we're looking at sidewalks, looking to prioritize areas where sidewalks are crumbling or missing, and where they can be replaced, and then applying for waiver grants or assistance, including corrected sidewalks, so they'll usually be a cap grant, to replace the, install sidewalks where necessary.
I was just wondering, if it had been, you know, the town area had already been visited, which is complicated, why?
It'll be included on our pedestrian plan. Because Chris Street itself has a lot of problems with old sidewalks, or utility holes in the middle of them, and they're not hand-cut accessible.
Old stuff.
Yeah, and a variety of locations, there is sort of the sidewalk business.
Yeah, I mean, it's a tight fit up there, but the more time you spend up there, the more you realize the amount of pedestrian traffic there, and at some point, they probably only have two people, they're right at the intersection, you know, the lane. So, I mean, the request is, I think, is very legitimate, so I'd like to see this, pursue that, and whatever, you know, the combination of criteria is best.
Yeah.
It's just like, you know, nothing, there is life on the other side of the bridge. And now that school has started, I've really noticed, Louis, when you're coming off 279 heading to town, on North Street, right by the middle school, that curb right there, I don't know why, but it seems like when people get past the middle school, they hit the gas, and they want to just fly around that curb. And it's, it is kind of hazardous, especially when you're trying to get out onto that road. But I did notice too, there's no signs from 279 until we get down to about 505 North Street. I think that's the first traffic sign there is. I was wondering if we can do something there?
Speed limit sign, what do you mean? Speed limit sign?
Anything that would work. Now, if you look on the other side, as you're leaving, there's children at play, or children...
The state won't allow children at play, so.
It's not children at play, it's, okay, it just went right out on that. There's a sign on the other side as you're leaving, but there's nothing as you're coming in. And they, traffic is crazy, they think they can just fly around that curb. So if there's a way you can slow them down, that would be really appreciated. And that's all I have.
I think also on that same stretch, you can read the radar on there, like, that's further down.
I think it's further, and they do that further out.
Right.
Like coming off the bridge, you...
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're talking about coming to town.
And the traffic on the other way is a problem. And if you're trying to get out of Elton, Littlemore, just say prayer.
Just real simple, I have a sign repair, but obviously Dan knows after the meeting. Exactly, does anybody know if that's a truck repair, or a business where a tile ground had its store?
It is, the truck repair, I believe.
Multiplicity of big trucks here, I just wondered about that, right there.
Yeah, they're renting the garages there.
Is that allowed in the town zone? Town zone?
I believe Chip had expressed that. It sounds familiar to me, but I believe Chip, because everybody works here, but I don't think that.
Very good.
So he's working in that area there? Or they're working?
I believe they approached him about the whether it was permitted or not, so. And I believe he said it was, but I'm not positive.
And also for your information, up off the East High Street, there's a lady there that has a rooster and it crows during the day. People have been asking about it, like, chief police at the Zonins, like, in that zone.
Code enforcer.
Code enforcer has been there and obviously they can't catch the young lady home to enforce what's supposed to be done, but it's just all right. You can be somewhere there or you can hear a rooster crow, but that doesn't sound good to me. They tried to get that picture. That's it.
Very good, thank you. I did have one other item. On September 11th, on a Sunday, at the Lighthouse Baptist Church, there's a First Responder Appreciation Day. It's going to be honoring, of course, our local fire, police, EMS units. There's going to be a lot of different odds and ends going on, including a helicopter landing, K-9 units, emergency vehicles and demonstrations. So if anyone has any interest in attending, it's on from 10:30 to 1:30. So, Ms. Brianna Shea, I'll give this to you. Maybe you can put something in the paper for us. Thank you.
I do have one out. Specifically, Mary Jo, what is the Boys' and Girls' Club name?
I, I. I know they're in northeast.
No, I said, what is the?
Oh, what is the building? Someone purchased it. I honestly am not certain what is in there. I think the Oxford House is renting it, is what I last heard.
And Oxford House is?
Oxford House is similar, not quite a halfway house.
We're covering.
I'm sorry.
We're covering.
Yes.
Is that specifically women? Or that's what?
They're not. If you look online, I have looked online.
I'm seeing what it says. That's why I asked. I talked down there. Thanks.
Commissioner Broom?
I don't have much to, to, see me, but I do know that they worked on the middle light down at the middle park for the football. Going to check for it when we leave the meeting tonight, haven't had a chance to test the lights on. So hopefully it'll be feasible enough lighting to use that back field. I think they talked to Jen, but she said they've used it a couple times. Now the light has been fixed, I think they fixed it in the middle of the week. But I'm happy to accept to see the part being used the way it is and hopefully if that works, we can go forward to maybe adding a second field on there. So the kids can be able to play a decent amount of time, can be out of the park without having to be here all day. So they use the two fields, that would be great. That was just the next step, hopefully if that works. That's just something thrown in there. I was just throwing that in there. But he's thinking that already. But I also wanted to commend the police department for the new police, the policemen that have been added to the staff. That's a good feeling and a good thing to see. I got a chance to meet a couple last week and seemed like good friends, are good guys already. The other thing is, I met with the homeowners association from, I didn't meet up, sorry, and talked to him from Kinsom Court. And we're going to be talking to you about following up on the, when I say you, the town, following up on the issue they have with the runoff at the border. They needed some help and support and we promised that we were going to try to get them some kind of a plan that to help them pull together something that could correct their issue. So I'm just throwing it out there that I, they, they did talk to me about it and the mayor. So we're going to follow up on it and get with them and see if we can help them. Other than that, I think I'm asking for.
Very good. Commissioner Bosky.
Okay. First, I know people are wondering, I wanted to thank everyone who participated in the Can't Stop the Feeling Elton Tribute video. It came from our promotion committees, Jen Harson and Jessica Price were ones that really thought it through and put it together. It was Jen's idea to do a downtown video and so far in five days, it's reached, before I got an email, I just got 30,399 people. So that's incredible. I just can't thank everyone enough and it's been nothing but really great comments about it. So we hope to do it again. So look for Elton 2 out there. And if you haven't seen it, you can go on the Elton Chamber Alliance Facebook, the Town of Elton, both of our websites, vimeo.com and search it. So it's just really done something for the town. I was actually at a funeral today in Philadelphia and people saw the video and were saying, "What a cool mayor you have." And, you know, that was pretty nice.
Make it real soon.
And, yeah. So, but I really want to thank everyone who participated because that was, it was a great thing for the town. And I have been asked by the Cecil County Arts Council, if you could pass one of these down to everyone. It is a six-by-six canvas and they would like, they're doing a celebrity drawing. It's actually a 2D or 3D painting. You to take seashells and put it on there. But they would like you all to do an art project for our October 1st Friday. And no one will know it's yours because the name will be on the back and they're going to display it from, you can get any help you need from someone else, but we all have to do one. And I was told not to leave here unless you all did say you would do one. And Amber Hamilton is, she couldn't make tonight's meeting. You could have your children help you, someone else that's artsy or you could try yourself. Oh, I know what the, I'm.
What's a bookcap?
Oh, something on a canvas. So, and it will be displayed first Friday, but if you can get it in by October 2nd and you could drop them off at my office and I will deliver them to Amber. So think of something, I think I already know what the mayor's going to do. He's quite artistic, he hasn't told anyone. Your recent project. But, so I hope you all participate and I come out in October 1st Friday because it's also on people's. So that's a great event at Arts Base on Me. And that is, I think, oh, and I did want to say, because you mentioned the guidebook, if you are not signed up for the Town of Elton's notifications, please do so. Go on the town website and just sign up for it and you will get notified if they're flushing the hydrants or there's a road closure, anything that's happening, events. So sign up for that and so you can get notified when things are going on.
I have one other question that asked, and this is asking a question, in front of the senior housing on High Street, I noticed there's a burgundy van that's parked right by the crossway. Is there a certain space that needs to be allocated, how to word it, allocated, so that people can see when people are crossing there? I don't know, I just know that it's very dangerous. The vehicle stand is sitting there, but it's within two to three feet from the wall. Is there some kind of a code or something for parking in front of the wall, crosswalk? And I'm asking that, maybe somebody can look into it, but.
I'm not sure exactly.
It's very dangerous.
Parking spot there and it's parked in a spot.
They're not parking in a spot, they're actually parking in the road to load people in and out.
No, this is parked.
Oh, it's actually parked.
It's a burgundy, or a roof there. I don't know whether somebody worked near. I'm not trying to take away parts of these, but for safety part of them. So I'm just.
Very good. This is the time we open up the floor to the public and I did have a couple people sign in and we'll have whoever else would like to speak. I have Ms. Pat Hoover and Betty White, or I'm assuming you're both together.
Yes, we have the same concerns.
So if you could come on down and speak into the microphone, that'd be great. I know you wanted to talk about water and speed bumps and a little bit of everything else. I've got you signed in, so just tell us who you are and let us know what your concerns are.
Okay, I'm Betty White. I live in Friendship Heights and I'm very upset about several things.
I'm Pat Hoover and I have the same concerns. And while we're thinking of it, we have new officers. We would like them to make their presence known in Friendship Heights, on Friendship Road especially, because we think there's drug dealing.
Oh, we know there's drug dealing. Because it's tons, Delaware, Pennsylvania, you name the cars in there. They're flying up and down that street.
Which is another concern.
We.
Speed bumps. They ask for speed bumps.
Have you called 911 and reported any of this?
I have been down here to this police station so many times, I've been. Just stopped an officer right on the street in there.
Okay.
And spoke to her. And she said she would try to set up some radar. That's not bad.
It was a year ago when we asked for the speed bump.
We actually sent the information out to the neighborhood and it came back, do we have that information? But it was coming, it came back.
Very close. Yeah, 60%, wasn't it?
Those for and those against, those against, one out by two votes. I can get the results in a second. There's probably more people that have moved in when you do it then.
Yeah, because we took the petition out. I mean, we don't have any speed signs, we don't have any speed bumps, we have nothing to control that street.
Speaking of speed signs.
It's wide open and goes straight down.
Yeah, speaking of speed signs, years ago, I remember West High Street had a 20 mile an hour, and I guess because it's residential. That would be nice, 20 miles an hour if you have children, maybe. Did you say something about you can't have assigned children playing?
We can on that street.
And people would be aware that children are playing. The speed bumps on Locust Lane make everybody come down our road because they're avoiding.
Absolutely. Everybody, motorcycles, being cars, you name it, we've got it.
And the water bill. A lot of people have a water bill that's $90 for three months. How in the world can we pay $153 some odd cents?
For one person. And the seniors. How can we expect us to pay that?
That's more than a dollar a day.
Have you contacted or asked to our Public Works Department or our Order Department to come out and check your meter and make sure everything is?
We're all getting the same bill.
The exact same dollar amount?
Yes.
It's the minimum bill.
Oh, it's a minimum bill?
But how can it happen?
How can you do that?
Our minimum bill isn't $153.
Well, it is counting the trash, it's counting the save the bag.
Okay, well, let me just correct you. That does include your trash collection.
Save the bag.
Save the bag.
I'm not interested in saving the bag.
So it's, it's your utility bill. Your utility bills are.
I think that's an option. If you want to donate to that, that's great.
I wish we could do that.
But I don't want you.
I don't think any of us want to.
I'm not interested in that. I don't go there, I'm not interested.
Hey, a good piece of that new waste water treatment thing we have, but that question about they do.
So see, your utility bill is $153 on the minimum side.
Like $154.
$154, okay.
How can one person in the house use that much water?
That's not all water.
No, it's not all water, but it's more water than I use and she would use. She's a single person in her home. Well, I'm a single person in my home and you're making it really difficult for seniors.
And our children, it's really so unsafe to see them fly down that street. They're just avoiding Locust Lane.
Now, help, get the, you're on the, you're, you're, you're going, Locust Lane goes all the way through.
An hour to go is a rail. I think it goes all the way through to it goes to us.
So they have to come back on Locust Lane to come out.
No, they use ours because they have.
We have your speed bumps, we have your speed signs.
We don't have a speed sign or children playing or any of that. I'd like to see a 15.
I mean, a truck that's in there screaming its tires and rattling off its muffler right in front of my house. Because I told him, I said, "Dude, you're asking for it." I'm not going to be harassed with living alone like that.
Well, I can say this, is that I will personally take a ride onto Friendship. I'd ask the board to take a ride through there tomorrow.
I go through there every day.
And if we feel.
You do?
I do.
You do?
I live right adjacent to you and I've seen over there quite often and you're right, you don't have that. And certainly they do speed through there.
Absolutely.
If this board feels it's a safety issue, we'll put a speed bump in there.
They, they need that there.
Oh, thank you. Because this, this guy in his story is terrifying me. When we stopped the police officer, I was so upset, I couldn't even hardly talk to her because of him rattling off his muffler in front of my house and screaming off.
And they are right there. They can't stop, so they don't go through there.
Where's the address? My address is 111.
Mine's 111.
I'm 104.
It's a crazy, it's a crazy thing. Like, this is my house directly across from this house and then there's her house. The street numbers are just.
Yeah.
Well, I will, I will personally, and I think the rest, I knew early you'd been out there, we'll take a look at that. I know, I know that we did send out the information, it came back that the majority of the residents did not want to have the speed bumps, but we'll take a look at it and.
And they wouldn't hear about the signs. They wouldn't hear about signs, would they?
The, the sign is an easy one when it's our street. It's when it's a state street, when it's a state.
I was referring to state earlier.
Well, we'd really, really appreciate your help on this because.
And I, and I want to stress to you that the, there's no one more passionate about water and sewer than this board. And the goal, one of, one of the goals that we had when we first, well, over the last two years, we were very fortunate that we were able to lower the water side of the bill by 11%. And that was two years ago. Now, it may not seem like a lot because it's only like, that bill's $159, but it was like $5. But I know that we're committed to drop that sewer side of that bill by another 11%, which will drop it down a little bit more. Now, I can't help at all with the, can't help at all with the save the bag. That's, that's a mandate by the state of Maryland.
Do people in my county road pay that?
Sure.
They do.
Do they?
They do. So it's a mandate that we're just kind of the collection agency for you. I don't like it. I don't think any of us like that mandate.
Well, it doubled because it was only $7.50 for quite a while. Are they going to make it go higher? Because how much, we can, we can only pay so much.
I can, I can say that your water and sewer bill will not go up as long as I'm sitting here. I can make that promise to everyone. It just won't happen. It may not, it may not be the best thing for the Town of Elton, but as long as I'm sitting here, it's not going to go up.
I think we remembered everything, I hope.
I hope so too.
Very good. Well, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Ms. Rose Sands. Ms. Rose Sands, 307 Melbourne. And I know you called into Town Hall.
Yep. Yes, I've been there. Thank you for, making me feel this much. My name, please, is Devine Ching Ching. I mean, on my street, which is only, we have, someone have either been broken into or some damage was done to it. When I go down to, I'm scared to go down the main street.
Okay.
Because it's, you know, partially to drug addicts and homes, as we all know.
Well, I, I want to, I want to suggest to you, I think that you should come down more often because our crime rate has decreased.
And how come when the town hall, it was counted with heaven?
Yeah.
The person was interviewed, the chief about some evidence and they said, and they asked them, "How come the crime rate which three times the number of speakers speak?"
And our chief was interviewed? I'm not saying that it's not high, but I am saying to you that it's going in the right direction, it's going down. And I can also tell you that over 300 of those calls that are on our docket belong to one customer, which is Walmart. Most of our, most of our crimes, I want to stress to you, are, are, and probably the chief can handle this better than me, but I'll try.
Part two offenses.
Part two, part two offenses.
You're less, you're less serious offenses and you're, and you're right on to. You're less, uh, you're less serious offenses. And you're, and you're right on that, uh, if you're in, you're out, anywhere from, uh, two hundred and seventy-five to more than three hundred, uh, arrests are made in Walmart alone, that makes your crime go up.
And, and I, I, I feel the pain. There's no one, I, I've lived, I'm sure you've probably been in the Town of Elton longer than I have, but I was born at the hospital nineteen sixty-one, I've seen a lot of changes in our town over the years. And, uh, but I will, I, I feel pretty comfortable that, that we're tackling it in a, in a very good way. I, I will also say that, uh, everything stems with this drug issue. That's through, that's throughout the whole United States and, and probably across the world. I meet with mayors all the time at these conventions and, and we'll sit there and, and we'll, we'll have an adult beverage and, and, uh, I'll say, you know, it's pretty bad, uh, in our community. And they say, no, mayor, you don't understand how bad it's in our community. And I really wanna stress, this is everywhere. This is not just a, uh, Elton issue or a Town of Elton issue or a Cecil County issue. This is a state of Maryland issue. And, uh, yes, we've had prostitution. I, I will absolutely agree with you a hundred percent on that, but I also believe that we've, uh, been tackling that pretty good. It's hard if there's demand out there for it. So what we have to do is, if, if there's no demand for prostitution, there wouldn't be any prostitution. If there's no demand for any drugs, there wouldn't be any drugs out there. But we're doing our best. I know our police officers are, uh, uh, out there all the time looking to address it. And I think you had an issue where you had, your house was getting hit with.
Millions, Tom, because I also had an attentive right there.
Okay.
And they, I had these steel doors, so they couldn't get in, but they went next door. And the man come to this window, it was an eighteen year old man, and he complained in him, in the kitchen, and we tried to make the money, it was a big setup. And, uh, you know, it's way further than, to fall to peace, but that time, he left.
Did, did we capture him, or do you?
Not, but on the wheel.
Okay.
I had to, um, he damaged my screen and my window in the kitchen, and he definitely damaged my door.
Okay.
And soon after that, demand for the rifle. And since then, he's since passed away, and it's why we moved to Florida.
Okay. I can, I can tell you that we are working our diligently to bring the crime down. Tonight was a, a, a sign we had for, of course, most of those officers have been here, uh, for, for several months, but we are trying to get up to full staff. Uh, it's not easy.
Oh, yes, you know, I, I can't remember where back then, used to be a coaching for kids in Elton.
What was that again?
A coach.
Perfect.
Yeah. And it seems the kids are wanting to work at night time. I don't know, with their store coaching or.
Well, they, they would have to be, uh, I think, I think that anyone that sees, uh, people out at a late hour should make that phone call. And it's a, we have to call nine one one, I hate to say it that way, but we gotta call nine one one to get any response. Uh, we don't have a local number that you could call like we used to, which was three nine eight forty-two hundred, but you'd have to call nine one one. And if you don't report it, we don't know of any of the, and you may be reporting, I don't know. But that's our challenge, if we have a lot of times, is that no one really reports what's going on to make us aware of the situations.
I know talking to my neighbors, you all been frustrated, because I see, well, all the kids, my daughter, they're not going to, asking us to do the argument.
Well, I, give us another try, because I feel extremely comfortable to tell you that our officers, uh, when we get that phone call from nine one one, we respond, we follow up. I think that we have the most professional police department. Uh, quite frankly, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step, step out and say, probably in the country, they are that good. And, uh, we've invested a lot of, uh, training, uh, a lot of dollars into our police department. We give them the best, uh, uh, equipment, the best training. Uh, and, and they do a great job for us. And, and I think that, uh, we've got some hurdles that we have to get. I'm not gonna tell you we don't have some hurdles, but we truly have some hurdles that we have to get over. And, and we are doing our best to, uh, uh, jump over those things and, and, uh, we, I, I think if, if we as a community can all stick together and we as a state and country can rid ourselves of these, of the drug side of the issues, uh, all the crime will go away, uh, or the large portion of it, uh, will go away. So, uh, we are trying. I know the chief is trying. I know that, uh, John's an attorney. I know you go through the system, uh, every day you see it. And, uh, but we are trying. Thank you so much for coming in. Please come in, more often.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is, uh, anyone else have anything to say this evening? Come on up, Dave.
That's the fun thing about coming to these meetings. People come up and talk and you're reminded of more things to talk about. There you go.
You gave us a photograph of, uh, three drinks, four drinks.
Yep.
Uh, right.
I mean, this, first thing, it's unusual to see mayor all in a suit.
There you go.
I was gonna ask you who died. Uh, secondly, thank you very much for announcing this. This is my home church. We are gonna have bagpipes, I'm pretty sure. And I know that there's at least fifty first responders that are gonna be attending this. So I would like to encourage you folks, it's Light Rocks Chapel meets, uh, a Walmart bike. Okay. Uh, this year, yesterday I attended the, uh, county meeting. Uh, they have citizens quarter, so that, that, that goes from six to seven. I was home by seven twenty. Between the time I left, uh, and came home, you're looking down at, at the pony wall across the street, and this is the stuff that's happening. And, uh, I'll just say that, you know, with some of the people that come through there, they'll sit and drink. Some of them are aggressive. I've confronted some of them. Uh, they have definitely toughened attitude. So it's not an acceptable situation. Um, I think at the last meeting, I, I brought up the issue of the pony wall being an attractant. And, um, Louis was gracious enough to respond to me almost right away and, uh, discuss something about, uh, no trespassing signs. There's been no action with respect to that. So, um, I, I would ask, uh, for contact information for the property owner for, for that piece of property there.
American Home and Hardware.
American Home and Hardware owns it, okay. So I'll go talk to Tommy Brown.
Um, he's the guy.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna talk to him. So, you know, this is, like I said, it's an unacceptable situation and a solution needs to be found. This has been a problem since I have moved here in two thousand and five.
Now, do you think a no trespassing sign on that wall's gonna alleviate this problem?
No, my suggestion would be to do something to the wall to make it not a place where people sit down.
Or.
Or, or, right, whatever. Um, third thing, uh, is, um, in, in my day job, I'll just mention it with respect to the historical commission. I'm not a degree architect. Uh, I am a mechanical engineer. And my, my stock in trade these days, past fifteen years, has been urban characterization and, uh, structures, sometimes historical structures. So, you know, I'm willing to consider something like that. Uh, I do believe I bring an awful lot to the table in that area and, uh, could be an asset to the town now. So, um, that, I, there's another issue which escapes me now, but, uh, that, that's pretty much all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Jamie. Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.